We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, June the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our invocation will be done by the Reverend Dr. Francisco Artley, the pastor of Posey United Methodist Church, and then we'll have our invocation, I mean, after the invocation, our Pledge Allegiance, led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. It's good to be here with you guys again. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. And, Lord, I just ask blessings upon our city council and our mayor and all of those that are present. Lord, I ask that you give them the wisdom and guidance to perform their duties. And also, Lord, I ask that you help them in making decisions that is best for our city. I just thank you for their commitment to our city and ask that you continue to work with them and bless them. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Pastor Artley. We appreciate you coming again to do our invocation for our legislative work session. And it was a blessing even to look at the flag today. Yesterday was Flag Day, and so that was something that we celebrated in the city of Douglasville and that was celebrated all over the country yesterday at six-thirty. And so sometimes just you take for granted the flag and what it means. And so that was a great time that we had in the community before Wednesday wind down. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken this evening. Official action on these items discussed tonight will take place next Monday at six p.m., or actually Tuesday, because Monday is Juneteenth. So we'll have Monday off, and we'll have our city council meeting on Tuesday. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the item comments from citizens and delegates, and you can come to the microphone and speak to us at that time. There are just a few protocol issues that I'd like to go over with you, and then we will begin our meeting with the agenda that is printed outside, if you like a paper agenda, and/or you can follow us with the electronic one that's on the screen. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments or things that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from that requirement, a second deviation will result in us turning your microphone off for the evening. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. We ask that you would just direct your information to the chair, and we'll move on from there. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have any materials that need to be distributed to myself and council members, we ask if you have printed material, that you would give that to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will make copies for us, and Ms. James, and she'll pass them out to us at another time. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you will please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting. And this is how the agenda items will be handled this evening. The committee chairperson will read his or her agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. We will ask questions. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us be able to make our decisions next Tuesday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of twenty minutes for those in favor of the item and twenty minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Prior to approaching the podium, please give your card to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Jack James, Ms. Candace James, and you should have your name and address on those cards. And when you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question and answer or debate format. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and to help us make our decision next week. Again, if you have any printed material, please give that to the Assistant City Clerk. She'll print it out and give it to myself and council members. And I believe that's it. So again, if you'd like to follow the agenda on the screen and/or if you want a paper one, there are some outside, and those blue cards are the citizens' cards that you need to fill out when you come to the podium to speak. Now, we will move on with the agenda as it is presented, and our first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, our Assistant Finance Chair is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair of Finance. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. We are on item number eight, Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I just tell you, Madam Mayor, we have no business. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We will move item number nine to the end of the agenda, and we'll go ahead with item number ten, Planning and Development Committee. And the vice chair for planning and development is Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight. The first item is to adopt a resolution to adopt the Town Center Implementation Strategy Living Centers Initiative, which is also known as the LCI.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Shayla Reed, Community Development Director. On our meeting on June first, we introduced the LCI project to you during a committee meeting, and we're now asking for your adoption of this file. And if you have any additional questions, I would love to answer.
Are there any questions?
No? There's a lot with the LCI.
All right. Madam Mayor, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda.
I don't see any opposition. I see some thumbs up, so I think that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our second item is hold a public hearing and adopt a proposed ordinance to amend Article four of the Unified Development Ordinance to add four point ten and amend section two point zero two for Town Center Mixed Use Zoning Classification. Ms. Jackson?
Hello, Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, six-seven-zero-one, Church Street. You recall that this item was referred to Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended approval, and there are no further updates.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions in regards to this, on this item?
One quick.
Sure.
I did want a clarification. I know that we have a one-acre minimum now for the presentation of a mixed use. So if there's a, if somebody's, I think might be helpful to explain to people, the process, if you have a property that's less than an acre and you still want to do it, you're still doing a mixed use project, how does that, how are you interacting with the planning department then?
So a property that is less than one acre is not eligible for this particular zoning district. You would have to acquire additional parcels that are adjacent, combine them to do this.
Well, let's say if you have, you know, if you own a, literally, a parcel in downtown that is one, you know, a quarter acre or less, let's say, you know, like typical of most of the downtown lots, and you want to build a townhouse with a restaurant below and an apartment above, that's a mixed-use development. What's the, what's the ramification then?
So the idea for this particular zoning district is that you want to do some placemaking, and in order to do that, you would need to have maybe one acre. We do have it, I believe, in the central business district, where you could have an apartment on top and a restaurant on the bottom on one acre, but it wouldn't necessarily be the, not one acre, on less than an acre, but that wouldn't be this particular zoning district. I'm able to confirm that for you and bring back additional information at the next meeting if you'd like.
But you would just be, it would just be treated as a normal application process then?
Yes, sir.
I want people to be clear that doesn't mean you can't do that in downtown, because that could be, I think that could be a little confusing to people, is that when you see things like one-acre minimums and stuff like that, it just, it just means it's under which this, the regulations of this particular process fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, I'll open the floor for a public hearing. If there's anyone in our audience that is against this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I don't see anyone running up. So I will, is there anyone in our audience that is for and would like to speak for this If so, come up and state your name and address for the record. I do not see any, so I would like to close the public hearing at this time and go to the next item.
Okay.
The next item is consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of adopting tributary phase C two A for plus twenty-seven point thirty-eight acres at Ancoast Street in land lots one fifty-four, one fifty-five, and one sixty-two, and one sixty-three. District one, section five, partial zero one six three zero one five zero zero two five, and zero one five five zero one five zero five six zero. Application by Gaston and Lee Craw, care of Michael Charleston. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. This is a final plat for single-family homes. It's a continuation of an existing subdivision and tributary. Staff has reviewed the plat, and we found that it meets the city's standards.
Thank you. This is an item that we've already discussed in the past, they're just adding the final plat. Is this, does we have any questions or comments by anyone? Or Mayor and Council? The final plat?
It's the final phase.
Yes. Okay. Single-family homes, that's correct. Single-family.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. If there are any questions or comments, I'll go to our last item. Consider requests for plat approval for the purpose of lot line, a lot line adjustment for two point four eight nine acres at eighty-nine twenty-eight and eighty-nine fifty-eight, Orchid Drive, in Land Lot twenty-two, District one, section five, partials zero zero two two zero one five eight zero zero eight, and zero zero two two zero one five C zero two eight. Application by William C. Detmarin III. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. This is for a lot line adjustment. The two parcels and questions both have single-family homes on them, and this is just a lot line adjustment that will change the property line.
Sure. It's better for the owner, correct? Right. Are there any comments or questions in regards to this item?
Just a comment. Maybe it's just me, but the plat map is funky on my, I can't see it.
So let me explain, if I may. Okay, I've spoken with Councilman Adams, so I understand that this property owner had owned two properties and sold one, so part of the property is going back to the owner, so he's deeding the other property off. Is that correct?
I don't have the background to confirm that.
Okay.
Based on what I have, there are two single-family homes, one on each parcel, and they're separate parcels. The plat was looked at by staff, and there's a lot line adjustment, I believe. The applicant is here that can provide additional.
Sure. If I would please ask the applicant to come up and state your name and address for our record.
William Detmarin, seventy-nine seventy-five Jones Ferry, Palmetto, Georgia.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we own the house and a lot next door. It's not really conducive to building on that lot, and the lot lines for my neighbor and where my house had been added on to are right on the edge. So we had sold my neighbor half of that lot, so we're just moving it to the center of the vacant lot and making the two lots larger.
Right. And that partial that, that is, that you're keeping, there will not be anything built on that lot, right?
No, no. It would really keep it from ever being built on.
Correct.
Now it just becomes part of the house next to it.
Right. Okay. Does that make sense? Do you understand? Yes, yes, ma'am. Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Mr. Detmarin, I apologize. Are you related to Judge Detmarin?
I am.
Please tell him I said hello. That's my former Rotary pal.
Yes.
Hope he's doing well.
I appreciate that. You look a little alike.
You do.
I know, I know. Do you have an Auburn? No, there wasn't, yeah.
I went, yes, I went, and my daughters went.
Oh, my gosh. You have three generations.
Three generations, yeah.
Well, my brother-in-law went and played football there, Danny Robinson, so, yes, I'll tell your family that we said hello.
Thank you very much.
Wish them the best. Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Detmarin. If not, this ends the items in our planning department. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one item tonight, and I will read the item. It's hold a hearing and consider requests to convert the probationary license to an annual license for the alcoholic beverage license on the on-premise sale and consumption of wine and malt beverage, spirits liquor at the following establishment. Proposed licensing, Civil Link Enterprise, LSC, DBA, Crew, Location eight four four zero Courthouse Square East. Proposed agent outlet manager Porsche Perryman. The rights have been paid into the finance department. Good evening, Ms. Perryman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. State your name and address for our record, please.
Porsche Perryman, eighty-four forty Courthouse Square East.
Marcus Perryman, eighty-four forty Courthouse Square East.
Would you mind if I start off?
Yes, you can speak, yes.
Okay. So originally, we were wanting...
Can you raise the mic and speak into the mic so I can hear?
The mic, we need to see a little more volume, probably.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we were actually wanting to just, we pretty much didn't want to vote on this because we don't want an annual license for this business. We just wanted to let it finish out because we are actually working on a new concept for the area that's more family-friendly, it's themed, and something that would be a great contribution and better, in our opinion, for the downtown area. So we tried to get in touch with you all sooner to do that rather than having this moment, but we were told to come and just tell you in person that we didn't want to have an annual license for this and just let our temporary run out as we are working on something new.
Is that it? Mayor and Council? I'm gonna call on my chief. Do you have any, any report, chief?
Yes, we do have to report some activity that we, our undercover operations went in, and as far as it relates to smoking hookah, I think the city council had advised them not to be involved in that activity. I think we have about five different occasions where we were involved in that undercover operation, or the fire inspector Corquille, he went in at one point, and he was in there actively smoking hookah after they were directed not to. So, you know, those are the incidents as it relates to selling and smoking a hookah on premises that we do, and we have video of some of these incidents.
Okay. Councilman Watts?
Thank you, Councilman Davis. So if I understand what you just said, you're ask, you're asking to let the license that you have now, the temporary license, the sale of alcohol, to expire in July, and that y'all are going to revamp the business?
Yes, so it's going to be a completely different concept menu and everything, so we don't want to maintain this. We just want it to expire out so that we can, once it expires out, we can start the process of a new business license and theme.
So are they asking for us to take no action, or, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, I did have a point of clarification. I am, in lieu of what the chief has said, even if we let the license expire at the end of July, correct?
No.
The middle of July. The hookah doesn't have anything to do with the alcohol license, so I know there have been some other issues as well. So I was just, I guess the clarity for me is even if we don't take action and you revamp, are you coming back? What's the process? City manager, what's, what's the process?
Really, Mayor, I think you might want to ask your legal counsel, I think, because they're asking, one, not to renew their license, and I think the question you're asking is if they continue to sell hookah. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, or what the business...
Without the alcohol.
No, Joel, thank you, Mr. Dotson.
The matter before you is a request to convert the temporary license to a full license. The applicant, I assume, made that request, and you now wish to abandon that. Is that correct?
Can you, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Do you want to abandon the...
Apparently, you filed a request to convert the temporary license to a full license at its expiration.
You said originally?
And you've now decided that you don't want to do that. You're just going to let the temporary license, the probationary license expire?
Yes.
Okay. And your question is, what's the process thereafter? If they want to sell alcohol, they'll have to come in and make another application for a license to either sell hard liquor or beer and wine on, and they'll have to meet all the requirements of the ordinance to get that license.
Okay. So would we at that time take into consideration some of the violations that have been done, or do we just, we're not dealing with that at all?
You're not dealing with it tonight.
Okay.
You can look at the history of the location at the time a new application was made.
Okay.
Since I don't know what revamping they're going to make, it's difficult to predict in advance.
Okay. So more family-friendly atmosphere. We'll just see what that entails, and what's your timeframe to come back to us? Are you going to close in the interim, or let July fifteenth, mid-July come, then come back to us at another time? Are you closing your facility, or?
We will be, it'll actually be a little bit before that date of the July fifteenth, but we will be closing and redecorating and things, and then coming back towards the beginning of when school is going to be starting.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Dotson and Chief Sparks. I appreciate the information.
Anyone else before we hope, Councilor?
Just, can you define that a little bit further, what you mean by revamping and family-friendly and?
Pretty much, it's just another restaurant concept that we're working on. That's more daytime, and I can't say a lot because we're trademarking currently, so I don't really want to put it out in someone, take our idea, but that's pretty much the gist behind it. It's more so a themed, daytime establishment that will be open to be able to cater to kind of a breakfast brunch menu and things.
But you will be, you'll be applying for an alcohol license at that time, though?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Will the, will the name change, or will you still try to have hookah, or what will happen?
It's a complete different, completely different concept. This was a franchise, so it wouldn't be associated with this at all, so it would be a completely different name, and exactly, more so, as I was saying, the brunch breakfast restaurant, so that wouldn't have any association with hookah.
Councilwoman Watts?
Yeah, just one last question on, on the hookah, since we've talked about it. So going forward to that mid-July expiration date, there, between now and then, there still won't be, there's still not supposed to be any hookah at the lounge.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that what you understand?
Well, that's the part, we've been in conversations more so with our council to get some clarity, because some things weren't being verdicted correctly, so it led to a variety of confusion, but we'll be clear on that with her.
I'm confused now. Who, who, who are you talking with about the hookah?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, we've been talking with our lawyer, is what I meant by council. I didn't mean a council member.
Oh, okay. So if the police department in the city of Douglasville says that it was prohibited, you're saying your attorneys read the contract differently from our ordinance, or?
In a sense, it was a different interpretation of things, so it just kind of led to some confusion with it for us, and not really sure, and then when talking with a few individuals, saying something different.
Madam Mayor, when they came before us months and months ago, it was specified real clear, written out, that no hookah was allowed in the establishment.
Correct. So do we have, is there a penalty phase, or do you have any violations, or do we, just the...
The chief got violations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Miranda Jordan, six-six-nine-five, Church Street. This matter is actually pending before municipal court at this time. There are open citations.
So we'll just leave that alone and let the judges, so we have legislative, executive, and judicial. We'll let all those branches do what they're supposed to do. All right, thank you. I was just trying to get clarity, because if you start with a new business, if it's not a clean slate, then we still need to address the issues that were concerned before that, because we can't look at, looking, you know, we have to look a little bit in the rearview mirror before we look straight ahead at the windshield. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Miranda, you hold a hearing. Do we have to swear anyone in? You have anyone that's going to come down and talk for you?
If there's no other information that needs to be provided, then we can close the hearing.
Okay. Do we open it up for the public hearing, for those in?
They're requesting no...
So there's no action, so we don't have to have a public hearing? Okay. I apologize.
Anyone else from the mayor and council? If not, we vote on this on, on Monday. Y'all come back on Monday, and we'll take a vote on it on Monday.
About taking no action?
No action at this time. Be Monday, or Tuesday, voting meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So we, so we're not taking any action? They don't need to come back if we're not taking action, do they?
Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday is my assumption that the chairman will make a motion of no action be taken on this matter on Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
I don't think they need to come back unless the council is going to seek additional information.
Right. I don't think so. So you, you would not need to come back on Tuesday if the chairman, if it's his pleasure to grant your request?
Yeah, we'll take a vote on it on...
Take no action.
On Tuesday, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
You don't have to come back. We'll take a vote on it on Tuesday.
So how will we know then? How will we know?
He's saying, he's telling you now, you don't have to come back?
Oh, okay.
Then you'll just, or you can come back to listen to us take no action, or read it a minute later.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mm-hmm, you too.
I have things.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. We'll move on then to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. The next committee is Technology Committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We'll go back to item number nine, not certain, oh, I see, our judge back there, our associate judge. So this committee is a Personal and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight in Personal and Organization. Item A, to reappoint Melaniese Bradley Davis as Assistant Municipal Court Judge for a term of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the mayor to sign a service agreement with her for that purpose. And I believe Ms. Judge Davis is going to speak to us, thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, you all, thank you so much, I do apologize for my tardiness, now that we are having to appear physically in court, moving attorneys around has become a little bit of a challenge, but I do appreciate the reappointment. I believe the members that are here will attest that we are moving the cases sufficiently, I think we've made significant progress in the Environmental Court with the citations and getting things cleaned up, so I'm happy with the progress we've made, so I gladly accept their reappointment.
Before, uh, Council asks any questions, I'd just like to ask you, how's it going?
It is going great, actually, everyone has been so amazing, from the court staff, the deputies, everyone has done an amazing job in terms of, we've done a few things differently to make it more efficient, you know, with some pleasing absentia, trying to negotiate some, negotiate the cases, but we are actually moving the cases much quicker than they were previously, so everyone is helping diligently, and it's, it's going well.
All right. Madam Mayor, did you have any comments before I open it up to Council, go ahead?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any questions, just a comment, I want to thank you, Judge Bartley Davis, we're getting great reports. I know with some growing pains, but as far as staff is concerned, we've been, you know, of course, people don't want to come to court if they have some issues, but we appreciate how you're handling things in a professional way, and how your staff is always so friendly and amenable and always, you know, transparent to bring forth information, we appreciate the reports that we receive, that, as you know, we, before we can ask the question, you are already providing us a report, so we appreciate that, and we hope that, as you said, the transition is helping and people are supporting you as you're sitting in that position, we are excited to grow our city in that respect, and as our City Manager reported to us earlier in committee meetings, just trying to make the city, we're growing as a city, and to make us more efficient to serve the community and the citizens that we serve, and help their tax dollars to be, you know, work for them, so I think Environmental Court helps to do that, so thank you so much, thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, if I may, and Council, she, oh, she has been amazing. We have, it, it was just wonderful, from the very first day she came on the bench, for someone who'd never sat in and been a judge, she's done a great job, she stepped in, and we're thrilled to have her and looking forward to another year.
Oh, great, thank you so much. How was your training, your judges' training, did you?
It was great.
It was great.
Um, training's been great, I've gotten more training for them.
I know.
But I, I think that you guys would be very, very proud of where we were and where we are now.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Burdanley, did I see your hand up a minute ago?
You didn't see my hand, but I do want to say, I believe that Councilman Davis and I may have the word that have lots and lots of issues, but I wanted to say you are definitely doing a great job. It is moving on very fast, and I do appreciate your diligence, thank you so much for your, what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilman Davis?
Well, I can't say too much, because she's better than Judge Judy. And I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it, and thanks again, and I never get that three twenty-eight fourth quarter at the Super Bowl. Thanks.
Well, any other questions or comments from Council? Well, Judge Davis, thank you for everything you've done so far and continued success, and I'd like to place this on the consent agenda, if that's all right with everybody?
Looks like a thumbs up.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Judge Davis, we appreciate it, and staff, our Municipal Court staff. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, so those are all the committees, we do have other business, and under other business, I want to make an announcement about our Grand Marshall for our Independence Day, Fourth of July Parade. I've chosen Superintendent North, Trent North, from the Douglas County School System, of course, he is the Superintendent of the Year for the State of Georgia, and so, coupled with that, he just received an award from the Chamber of Commerce for leadership and how he gives back to the community, and so, we're just excited that Superintendent North, and of cour, he was a finalist as well for the National Superintendent, School Superintendent of, for this, the United States, so we're just proud that he is from Douglasville, Douglas County, and how he does a wonderful job with the educational system, so he is the Grand Marshall for this year's Independence Day, and we're looking to have someone else that was just recently here, if they have time in their schedule, to come back and be our special guest, so I don't want to name the person, but we hope that she will be able to come, it's, it's, we're crossing fingers and toes that she might be able to come back for that time, if her contract and her schedule allows. So, that's the only announcement I had, I know we do, this weekend, that the county is doing a reception tonight to kick off Juneteenth celebration for the, for the weekend, and so that's at the County Courthouse from six thirty to eight thirty, and tomorrow, there is a, an event that be, he is giving for a prom here at the Conference Center, and then Saturday and Sunday are festivals on O'Neal Plaza to celebrate Juneteenth, and that Monday is the actual holiday, and we have that day off, City Hall is closed, so those are the other business, only other business that I had. And yesterday was Flag Day, and it was great, Wednesday wind down was a great turnout, the rain held off, and so, was, is very good, and we'll ask, that we'll pray for our adju, adjoining communities that suffered from lightning strikes and hail and some, I think it was in LaGrange, twenty-nine trees were down, so just keeping those folks in our prayers, thoughts and prayers, as they're rebuilding in their communities, and we were blessed not to have some of those things, unless Mr. Gregg didn't tell me, he usually does, so that we were, we were blessed in Douglasville just to have a lot of rain and not any damage. So, that's all I have, any other business from elected officials? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
One quick thing, I, last week I had the good fortune of attending the Annual American Institute of Architects Convention in San Francisco, wonderful city, by the way, if you get out there if you haven't been there. Mostly, the, the agenda was obviously architectural issues, but there was one interesting session I attended that was a sort of a crossover to something that we're working on now, which is updating our American with Disabilities Act, infrastructure, facilities and so forth, and there was a, a session on neuropathologies, and how that's now intersecting with Americans with Disabilities Act, that, most people think of ADA as affecting physical disabilities, but there are a lot of mental and neurological disabilities that intersect with that as well, it has to do with, you know, sensitivity to light, crowds, whack of crowds, things like that, so there's a lot of interesting things that I think we can take a look at as part of our study that intersects with it, and it was pretty interesting, it was a very interesting session. And also, I advocate that we should add some cable cars to downtown Douglasville.
Oh, it shouldn't cost very much, San Francisco. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that's interesting, it really is something to look at, because it does make a difference in how your city is lit, you know, we've, have gotten something, I have a recent letter that someone was talking about lights in the downtown area, and that does affect, like you're saying, the neurological functions as well for migraines and all kinds of things, but for safety especially, lighting and all of that in our community, so thank you so much. Any other comments or concerns from Councilmembers? No? Alrighty then, we'll move on to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Chief of Police, Chief Sparks?
We have the cops and cars at the Police Department this Saturday.
Oh.
So, come out and, and, you know, bring your antique vehicles and clean them up, come out and just enjoy the day at the Police Department, we will have food out there and just enjoy the day, hopefully it'll be, it will be a beautiful day, and just come out and look at some cars and some motors, and just, be your car enthusiast.
Now, what time is it, Chief?
Uh, from ten to three.
Ten to three, you know that Juneteenth is ten to six, so I'm gonna try to clone myself, maybe I can sneak over there and come back.
Come on through that for a minute.
And the Chief, I have to give you a compliment, someone in my family is doing an internship, and they interviewed you today, I don't know if you knew who that person was?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
But she said it was wonderful, she went for, now, coach, she was gonna be there for fifteen minutes, other department head, she interviewed for ten to fifteen minutes, she says she was there with the chief a couple hours. It was very interesting, so she really enjoyed the Police Department, thank you so much, Chief. So, we'll move on then to our City Manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am, I don't have a report, but Ms. Chelsea Jackson does.
Okay, thank you so much. Our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, six six nine five Church Street. I wanted to make a brief report regarding the proposed change of a location of Food Truck Monday, currently, if you all know, Food Truck Monday is in the old downtown Police Department precinct, we basically outgrown that location, and as you all know, if you've been down there, the black top, it's get, it gets kind of hot, especially when you have more than about two or three trucks in that area, so staff is proposing to bring it more so in front of City Hall, so it'll be on Church Street in between City Hall and the Conference Center, of course, we wanted to gain consensus from Mayor and Council, because we will have to close streets down in order to have it in that area, so the proposed street closures would be Price Avenue between Church Street and Spring Street, as well as Church Street between Bowden Street and Price Avenue. The dates that'll be affected will be Mondays, of course, from four to nine P.M., July third, July seventeenth, July thirty-first, August twenty-eighth, and September eighteenth. We've already checked with the Conference Center, the only thing happening at the Conference Center during that time is Mayor and Council meetings, so during Mayor and Council meetings, you may hear, if you all are in agreeance, agreeance to move it, you may hear the DJ or the band that's out there doing Food Truck Monday, as well as people going by, but we wanted to ensure that we picked a location that we continue to grow, so currently we'll have four sweet, four savory trucks and two sweet trucks, so it's usually six to seven food trucks there, and so the space that we're currently in, it doesn't fulfill, was not large enough to hold six trucks comfortably.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Jackson, that's, that's some, doing things differently, so that opens up for more food trucks, and it's something that is very popular, is becoming very popular in the community for the past few years that we've been doing the Food Truck Monday, so I think that would be wonderful, and do we have to take any action on that, or we're just, is it consensus, how do we do that, City Manager?
You all can authorize the Chief to do it, but I think Councilwoman Miller had a question, Madam.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't see you, Councilmember Miller.
I just had a quick question, in reference to those streets that you mentioned, I was just looking at the map, so basically, it would be Church Street from Bowden to Price, just in that little area?
Yes, ma'am.
As long as the businesses have a problem with that, I think it's great.
Yes, ma'am, and we plan on with our, we're in work with our Main Street Coordinator to ensure that we send out an email prior to this, and to make sure that the businesses are okay and they know, but as you all know, most businesses in the downtown area are closed on Mondays.
And the businesses in that particular area is just the city, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, Assistant City Manager, I did have a question, and this may be for future Food Truck Mondays, but I know when we met with Councilman Estes, and it didn't come up this time, but there has been requests from, in the tributary area, to have food trucks, and I'm not certain, I know it can't be Monday because you can't clone the trucks, but maybe on Friday or Thursday, and I'm, I'm not sure if we want to readdress that, did you hear that as well, Councilman Estes?
Um, I, I appreciate the thought, but as of now, I think that is something that the tributary community should organize for itself.
Okay.
Instead of having the city handle that. And, and they have done that a few times before.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so I, I think we're good, but thank you for the thought.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you, I'm glad it's taken care of then, I didn't want to let you know I didn't forget, so thank you so much, and I did, when you mentioned July third, I had an update for other business report for Councilman Davis, for a question he asked me as well, but thank you. So, I apologize, I'm out of order, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Councilman Davis, we did your requests for the celebration for Juneteenth, we talked with the county, and I, you know, gave you the update of them having an event, a reception tonight from four, from six thirty to eight thirty.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to make it, uh, Madam Mayor, also, I'd like to see the pictures that, that Happy Father's Day weekend, last night had all the dads come out, about sixty fathers?
Yes, sir.
And we took a picture, I'd like to see that in one of the Impact magazines, the daddies came out, and last night we honored the fathers.
Yeah, for Father's Day, I think.
They didn't have to dance, but they just, you know.
Yeah, they left on the dancing part.
Yeah, there's anyone that had it outstanding, I put them in the back.
So, Miss Allison Parker was out there with Mr. Post, so I'm sure she'll have those pictures, but the update for your consideration, Councilman Davis, was about the parade for Juneteenth and having the possibility, we did talk to staff, and that's something that we can look into the future, but Council has to look as well, the only two parades that the City of Douglasville really sponsor are the Fourth of July Parade and Christmas, the Christmas Parade, so the other parades that are given in the community, Labor Day, they use the city streets, but that's the Shriners, and Veterans Day is the county, so they use the city streets, but they're not sponsored by the City of Douglasville.
Yeah, I'm aware, and the, the organization, they have no problem in doing a parade, so it'd probably be one next year, BEH, they have no problem.
Yeah, so we just have to see if staff can, if we have police officers that will work the parades, if we have, you know, staff that will do, you know, all the support that we do, because now we support with public services and security, but just to have that, the parade is a huge intake responsibility on the city staff, and you know, that's another one of those days off that we would have to pay overtime and all that kind of stuff, so anyway, that's the report that, you know, I know you talked to me, and the, the BEH group had a request about the parade, so the only two that we really have in the city that the city sponsors is Fourth of July and Christmas, the other two are outside entities. City Manager, do you have anything else to say about that?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting, you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that has determined to the City of Douglasville. Good evening. Yes, sir.
Good evening, good evening, Ms. Mayor and the City Council, I just want to start by saying it's pretty chilling in here, I was not expecting that, but I would have my ankles out of these short sleeves if I knew, but my name is Cisatumbuya with Real Apartments, this is my colleague, Noel McPherson, and our other business partner and the founder of Real Apartments couldn't be here, but basically, we're a multifamily investment group, and we focus on affordable housing, so we actually own Douglasville proper, which is just across the train tracks, it's a hundred-unit Lytec, restricted to fifty and sixty percent AMI, all affordable housing, and we are committed to affordable housing, so historically, we've done market rate, built the portfolio up to over a thousand units, and then we transitioned to affordable housing just last year, and we're looking to expand on that and really help meet the need that a lot of metro Atlanta, and really the whole nation is seeing with affordable housing just being in deficit, and just hearing what Ms. Hampton was talking about, I just know that there's really a need for affordable housing, we want, we want to be allies as you guys look to grow the affordable housing stock in Douglasville. So, a lot of what we do is we look at Lytec properties, but there are some limitations with that, so we're looking at how can we partner with local housing authorities to create affordable housing through acquiring market rate properties and then adding an affordable component to it, so we want to be able to introduce ourselves to you guys, let you know that we're here, we're looking to partner, and see what programs or opportunities there are for us to be able to help in meeting that goal of creating more attainable housing. And we also like to offer Douglasville proper, if there's anything that you guys would look for in terms of housing vouchers, or project-based rental assistance, we'd like to make that known that, you know, we're looking to partner and be an ally.
Yes, sir.
If there's anybody that we need to speak to, or any, anybody that would be the best contact for, you know, just what we're looking to do, and see how we can make something happen, we'd like to know.
Yes, sir, our Community Development Department, Ms. Shayla Reed, who's in the rear with this, the stripe, a black and white jacket and a red blouse as a person, our Community Development Director, whom you need to speak with and see, you know, how you, where you would fit in, if at all possible, in the city with our comprehensive plan and our housing stock, so she'll be the person that, to talk with, and then she'll give you the whole process, there's a sheet that you need to go through, and, you know, see how all that works, go before the Planning Commission, myself and council members, but the start, just like Monopoly board, where you get your, your start is right with Ms. Reed. You're welcome, thank you for the invitation, we welcome you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Thank you, I don't see any, do we have any other business to come before Council this evening? If not, then this, open the floor for adjournment, you must commit to adjourn, okay, second, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.